All right. Consent agenda, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda this evening is amendment to the Culpeper Cable Commission bylaws, approval of the contract and lease agreement with Culpeper Parking Authority, approval of the residential net metering credit rate, transfer of water fund reserves to water fund budget for FY23 Chandler well C3 and C6 rehabilitation and pump installation, treasures reports, and minutes of previous meetings.
Move to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Special items and recognition 601, invitation to bid on a non-exclusive franchise and telecommunications equipment. I'm open the floor this time for bids. If anyone like to bid on this.
Mr. Mayor, is your microphone on?
Yes. Yes. It's on. Anyone like to bid? No one? Thank you. Seven...
Do you have the...
No, not this. That's on another one. That's another one.
Okay.
701, public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for town citizens, businesses, and groups to comment or bring to our attention in the town government related issues. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. For groups present, you are requested to have spokesmen. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Anyone like to speak on anything pertaining to the town? This is your time. You won't be able to speak after this.
I've been nominated to speak, but I don't want to.
All right.
I live in Culpeper. Gary Deal is my representative, so I think I live in West Fairfax technically. And we are here tonight with my mom and my neighbor and some of my other neighbors who couldn't be here tonight to support the resolution that you have about chickens and turkeys and other fowl. We've had a lot of trouble with them in our neighborhood, destroying our property. And we've done the neighborly thing and gone to the residents who own the chickens and the turkey, and nothing really seems to change. So that's why we're hoping that you can help us get some change. That's it.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Kelly O'Neal, 323 West Park Avenue.
All right. Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I just make one point? You may only have one board supervisor representative, but here you have nine.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. 801, Mr. Yao.
Yes. I move that council appoint Corinne E. Compton to the Parks and Recreation Commission to fill an unexpired term ending December 31, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? End of discussion? All right, thank you. All right. 901A, public hand on non-exclusive franchise for telecommunications equipment. The next item on this agenda is for public hand and receipt of bid for first reading of unconfined ordinance number 02023005 granting a condu franchise for 25 years. The town has duly advertised this franchise as required by law for all franchise with a duration of more than 20... more than five years. I now open the floor for public hand. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes.
Can you get your mic?
It's on.
Yeah, but not close enough for the...
Would anyone like to speak? All right. Public hand is closed at this time. The town has received one bid from Crown Castle Fibers LLC for $1 in additional to the fees listed in the franchise. Anyone else wishing to submit a bid for this franchise will bring it forward at this time. Would anyone like to bid on this? At this time, I'm going to close the bid and sign the bid. Clerk come forward at this time? Oh, you want to pass it? All right. 9.01A1RR reference, unconfined ordinance number 02023005, condu franchise agreement, Crown Castle Fibers LLC, first reading had.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, before you, you have an ordinance for consideration for a 25-year agreement for an underground conduit franchise with Crown Castle Fiber LLC, which just submitted the bid that you had before you. Crown Castle currently has a five-year agreement that expires next month in June 2000.
I don't think it would.
Crown Castle has an agreement, currently a five-year agreement that expires in June 2023, next month, and is looking to renew it for a 25-year term. They currently have 425 linear feet within the town limit, and at the proposed rate, conduit fee of $1.41 per linear conduit foot would result in a fee of approximately $600 per year, increasing at 3% over the term. The recommendation is that council accepts the bid for granting a telecommunications conduit facilities construction agreement franchise to Crown Castle Fiber LLC to permit use of town right-of-way for underground conduit within the corporate limits for a period of 25 years, beginning June 12, 2023, with no extensions, and adopts ordinance 02023-005 and waives the second reading and authorizes the mayor and the clerk to execute the document.
Motion to approve?
Second.
End of discussion?
$600.
Roll call?
Aye.
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 9.01, public hand of proposed fiscal year 2023 budget amendment had.
Tonight, we are holding a public hearing for a proposed budget amendment to be considered after the hearing is held to increase the current year fiscal year 2023 operating budget for the electric fund in the amount of $2,100,000. The purpose of this is due to increased purchase power costs through our power supplier, VMEA, which was not anticipated at the time the budget projections were done early in January 2022.
At this time, I'm open the floor for public hand. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Would anyone like to speak on this? No one? Close the public hand at this time. 9.01B1RR reference, electric funds FY23 budget amendment had.
Before you, you have a report and recommendation to increase the electric fund operating budget in the amount of $2.1 million, also increasing electric fund revenues in the amount of $1.4 And thus, this amendment requires a $700,000 transfer from electric fund reserves. The recommendation is that council approve the increase in the revenue line for metered sales electric by $1.4 million, increases the expenditure line for electricity purchase from VMEA by $2.1 million, and transfers $700,000 from electric fund reserves.
So moved.
Second.
End of discussion?
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
902, we have nothing on that. 903, reports and recommendations from council committees, personnel orders committee. 9.03ARR reference, ordinance number 02023-004, amending chapter 3 animals, adding section 3-11, keeping of chickens of the town code, first reading, Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As was mentioned at the public comment period, we have before you this evening a first reading of the ordinance related to the keeping of chickens in town. This was already underway as part of our overhaul of the zoning amendment or the zoning ordinance, but it was asked that we expedite this particular portion of it. We took through council committee draft language related to chickens, primarily the status of the conditions in which they may be kept, that they must be kept in backyards, enclosed areas, have coops, that roosters would be prohibited. And committee recommended that for consideration by full council. Subsequent to that time, council members did receive a number of comments from citizens wishing to see it expanded beyond chickens to fowl more generally, so including other types of birds as well. Staff has prepared additional language for council to consider that expands that to cover turkeys, geese, ducks, and other fowl. So the report and recommendation, the recommendation before you this evening is that you hold the first reading of the ordinance 0-2023-004, amending chapter 3, animals of the town code by adding a section 3-11. Originally, it was the keeping of chickens. If council so wishes to do, it would be the keeping of fowl on May, tonight, with a second reading scheduled for June 11. It's further recommended that council amend the town of Culpeper's fine and fee schedule to add a $100 fine for the violations of section 3-11 of the town code. So what we would recommend is that council stipulate which version, be it the chickens or the fowl, that you wish to move forward to, and so to clarify that that would be up for consideration at the second reading in June. Happy to answer any questions any members may have.
So I have a little bit of question on the chicken math. So does a duck equal two chickens? And does, like, a turkey equal three chickens? Because it says or within the language of the ordinance that involves the full fowl. Does that mean if you have five chickens, you can't have any geese? Like, you know, like, is there some type of language that we can put in to kind of make it a little bit more clear?
We certainly can. Again, we didn't want to get to the case, a number of other localities have what's called animal units or bird units, where essentially certain numbers equal to it. We didn't quite want to go that route. If there's a desire, we can, but we wanted to make it a little bit more clear by having specific numbers of them there. The way it's currently contemplated, you could have so many ducks and so many geese and so many chickens. If we wish to limit it to simply a maximum number that encompasses multiple birds, we could do that, but that's not the way it's currently drafted.
Right. So I just question procedurally, how do we designate or vote or by consensus? We want the fowl amendment as opposed to the chicken amendment or chicken ordinance? How do we do that?
We move at the first reading tonight on the fowl.
It's at council's discretion as to which one. As I said, we received word from several members, and so there seemed that the initial language that had come through committee was coming up short of the expectations in terms of being limited strictly to chickens.
If... So I think... I was going to say, if I could add to that, you don't need to do anything tonight with that. You could leave it the way it is. If you would like some changes to be made with one of these or another one, you know, you could ask us to do that. Actually, at the June meeting, someone would make a motion to clarify which way you want to go and then vote on that motion. I don't... I guess if you wanted to, you could make a motion tonight to remove one of the options, but I don't know if there's really any protocol for that.
Well, I think just to clarify it for not just us, but for the general public, if we... if the first reading, the first reading should be on what we want in the end, I think. So then the first reading should be on the fowl version, the fowl version, the version that addresses fowl.
So I think maybe the best thing to do is make a motion to either remove one of those options from consideration or a motion to amend what's there or something like that, to move forward to the second reading then.
I move that we remove, it's just the chicken one and force the second reading with the fowl one. The fowl.
Seconded.
All right. Ask you, you want to do a roll call on that? You going to do a roll call? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? All right. Roll call? Oh, you... No roll call. You don't need a roll call. All right.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I may, since there was the question raised, and as the manager pointed out, if there are changes that are requested to that, some guidance, if we wish to look to have it more as a set cap on the number of birds as opposed to a in addition to, we can look to modify the language to do that.
I just feel like stretching the ordinance out, like, you know, six chickens, three ducks, two geese, two turkeys, six quail, like, you got a menagerie at that point, and I think that's kind of what we're trying to stop. So putting a hard cap on, like, eight birds or something, I think, would be appropriate. No more of them, no more than two of them can be turkeys, and no more than three of them can be ducks and, you know, along those lines.
Right. We can certainly do it. Now, I will say that the way it's written, though, they would have to have the adequate square footage for each of those birds, both in terms of a coop as well as the enclosed run area for them. So while the numbers could essentially overlap, the area would need to be proportionate to the birds. But we can look to have a institute a hard cap on the number of birds.
I would just like the rest of council's opinion on the issue, really.
I'm not sure we need a hard cap on the number of units of birds. I think the way staff's written this out, taking into account square footage, placement, location, I think that'll, I think that'll be a limiting factor for most folks in town already. I haven't heard of a... I mean, petting zoo would be kind of cool for us, those of us with kids, but I mean, I haven't heard of that happening yet, so.
And a partridge only if you have a partridge.
All right. All right, thank you, Andrew. All right. 9.03B1RR ref... approval of a non-exclusive license agreement with Sugar Bottom Enterprises LLC, Andrew.
Sorry, I thought I had one in between me there. This would be granting a license to Sugar Bottom Enterprises, Mr. Jeffrey Mitchell, for his cheese shop on Main Street to be able to utilize some of the public sidewalk for planters. What's being proposed is a one-year lease with options for renewal if it's so approved by council. We had a chance to look at it in committee, along with images of where these would be located, and it was recommended by, for approval by council. So the recommendation is, pardon me, the council approve the non-exclusive license agreement with Sugar Bottom Enterprises for a term of one year and authorizes the town manager to execute the document.
I had a question before.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Second. All... motion approved. And second, end of discussion?
I had a question of staff, but okay, I can do so. All right, so Exhibit A shows a basic layout with dimensions, that sort of thing. Did somebody verify those measurements?
Yes. We were out there with the tape measure.
Everybody's good? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember...
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.04ARR ref... resolution imposing and levying taxes for FY24. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. In summary, this resolution fully equalizes the real estate tax rate from 8.2 cents to 6.6 cents per hundred. It also reduces the Lafayette special tax district tax from 5 cents to 3.5 cents per hundred. The recommendation is the council adopt resolution number R20233, imposing and levying taxes for FY24, and authorize the mayor and town clerk to execute the documents.
I move the recommendation.
Second.
End of discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is 9.04B, resolution setting FY24 electric rates. The... this resolution increases the electric rates by 1%, and this rate increase will result in a $1.23 per month rate increase for a typical 1,000 kilowatt-hour customer. The recommendation is that council adopt resolution number R20234, setting the electrical rates effective July 1, 2023, and authorize the mayor and town clerk to execute the documents.
I move the recommendation. Second.
End of discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is 9.04C, resolution setting FY24 water and sewer rates, resolution setting water meter service fees, and resolution setting tap privilege assessment fees. These resolutions increase the wastewater rate by 4%, the water rate by 3%. The wastewater rate increase will result in $1.61 per month increase in a typical 5,000-gallon per month wastewater customer, and the increase for a water rate customer is $1.01 per month for a typical water customer. Also included in the resolution setting water meter service fees, there's an increase in the new, setting a new water meter based on the material cost increases, and this is for meters larger than a 5/8 inch meter size, and there's no changes in the tap fee. The recommendation is that council adopt resolution number R20235, setting the FY24 water and sewer rates, resolution number R20236, setting the water meter service fee, and resolution number R20237, setting the water and sewer tap privilege assessment fee, and authorize the mayor and town clerk to execute these documents.
End of discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.04D, FY24 fine and fee schedule. The proposed fine and fee schedule includes highlighted changes, as is in your packet. The recommendation is that council approve the schedule of fine and fees effective July 1, 2023, and authorize the town clerk to execute the documents.
Second.
End of discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, 9.04E, resolution adopting the FY24 budget. The recommendation is that council adopt resolution R20238, adopting the FY24 budget totaling $58,353,836, and authorize the mayor and town clerk to execute the documents.
So moved. Second.
End of discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.04F, resolution approving the FY24 employee classification plan and salary wage scale. This is the same scale as the FY23 budget. It is recommended that council adopt resolution number R20239, approving the FY24 employee classification plan and authorizing the mayor and town clerk to execute the document.
So moved.
Second.
End of discussion? Madam Clerk.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, 9.04G, resolution appropriating the FY24 budget. It's recommended that council adopt resolution number R202310, appropriating the FY24 budget totaling $58,353,836, and authorize the mayor and town clerk to execute the documents.
So moved.
Second.
End of discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, 9.04H, resolution for parking authority appropriations. The recommendation is that council adopt resolution number R202311 for FY24 Culpeper Parking Authority appropriation totaling $145,950, and authorize the mayor and town clerk to execute the document.
So moved.
Second.
End of discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.04I, approval of transfer to strategic reserves. With these transfers, the Budget Stabilization Fund will have a balance of $3,822,500 and will be fully funded. Also, with this transfer, the Major Capital Improvement Fund will have a balance of $5,19,253, inclusive of amounts allocated to the joint town and county pool and the FY24 budget and the amount of $4,750,000. The recommendation is that council approve the transfer to strategic... The recommendation is that council approve the transfer to strategic reserves of $815,000 to the Budget Stabilization Fund and $2,550,000 to the Major Capital Improvement Fund.
So moved. Second.
End of discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Amicas?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.04 G, excuse me, J, approval to purchase five replacement and two additional police vehicles. Due to the current long lead time in delivery of vehicles, it is requested that council authorize the purchase of seven police vehicles included in the FY24 budget. The recommendation is that council approves the expenditure of funds to all the seven police vehicles to be purchased. This purchase will occur after July 1.
So moved.
Second. End of discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Amicas?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Town manager report, Mr. Manager, you have something for us at this time?
Yes, sir, I do. Sorry, my hearing aid's fallen out. Sticking that back in. So I do have an addition that I would like to mention that occurred after we posted this report. The Virginia Association of Destination Marketing Organizations awarded two Virgo Awards this past month to the Town Tourism and Economic Development Department. The first award is the Niche Tourism Virgo Award, which is given to a destination that has created a creative and successful tourism initiative that showcases a destination's niche tourism market. This award was received as a result of the newly launched Write the Record program, which aimed to raise awareness regarding the vast wealth of African-American history and heritage within the community and celebrates African-American history and Culpeper. The African-American Heritage Alliance worked with the Town of Culpeper to create this unique experience inspired by these untold stories. I would like to acknowledge the African-American Heritage Alliance members, Angela Chapman, Simone Logan, Zan Nelson, and Michelle Tutt, who worked with the town on this project. The second award was the Tourism Professional of the Year Award, which was awarded to Paige Reed, our own Culpeper Tourism and Economic Development Director, for her impact on tourism in the community through creative teamwork and leadership. On behalf of the town, I would like to thank Paige, her team, and the community partners for what they do. It's very well deserved. Thank you.
Want to have any questions or comments?
I don't think there's many other questions. I have a comment, though. As long as we're throwing awards around, there ought to be one for the manager and the staff for, once again, presenting us with a budget, especially a general fund, that allows us to do all the things that we're going to do this fiscal year without raising any taxes for the 25th year in a row.
Yeah, you beat me to it, Pranish. I was going to say the same thing, that not only kudos to you and Howard, but to the whole staff, and then also for council for their constructive input during the budget process. The Finance Committee thanks you.
Also, I'd like to thank everyone for doing a good job. We all work together, and we need to keep working together. That's the only way you get something done. Thank you. Anyone else has anything else? If not, we all journey. Ew, Lord.